Session meeting on November twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four. And it's another beautiful fall day in Garner, spectacular sunset. The holidays are upon us and the agenda looks very short and informative this evening. So we have a lot to be thankful for, not not too controversial. So saying that, I would ask our deputy clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Buxton?
Here.
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 Yes, Council Councilman Singleton is attending to family business. He has asked that we call this an excused absence. I would ask for a motion to that effect.
So moved.
And a second, there's a motion by Mr. Matthews, a second by Ms. Behringer. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Before we jump into our town business here, I would like to give a shout out to our town staff and our council members who have been working particularly hard in the last few weeks. And not only hard, but effectively. Even Mr. Singleton, who's had been out of the office, he's been emailing, doing his homework and staying involved. Everybody has been applying themselves. We we talk about seeking balance and trying to seek balance between all of our different audiences, all of our different bosses. But these are our taxpayers, our property owners, our development partners, our staff, our other governmental entities in the county and in the state. It's an ongoing job. But over the past few weeks, particularly more than ever, I've seen the staff reaching out, having conversations with these folks, listening, and I've seen some very satisfied customers, you might say, with the results and the hearings, the listening tos that have occurred. So thanks to all of you for the hard work, even though the citizens don't see you out there on the public work trucks and they don't see you out there putting up signs and passing potholes. You're working hard, all of the staff, even the ones that are least visible, the ones inside are doing a great job. We have a lot to be thankful for. And saying that, I think I'll move along to adoption of the agenda. We've looked at it. If there's no questions or suggestions, I would ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vance, second by Ms. Behringer to adopt the agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. Moving right along to section C. I see there are no presentations. Gosh, we've given out all the presents, all the plaques, all the proclamations. We'll get right down to discussions and reports. And we do have some interesting things on the agenda this evening. We will start with a discussion of some suggested text amendments and kind of modernization, continuing refinement of our Uniform Development Ordinance. This one relating to residential building in neighborhoods and mixed use areas. And we'll call on Mr. Jeff Trezenberg, our planning director, to give us a little overview and kind of give us an idea of what we might be dealing with over the next few months as we continue this refinement. Mr. Trezenberg.
Good evening. How is everybody? It's good to be here with you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yes, as promised, we did want to try to kick off an initial discussion about residential development in Garner and hopefully how we can start to do it a little better, taking our comprehensive plan and keeping it in mind as to how we can take some of those objectives and goals and potentially retool our Unified Development Ordinance a little bit to hopefully achieve some of those goals better. And I think, you know, we all have cases that we remember that have been coming before us in the last few months. You know, we've talked about folks using the R eight district in a manner that we probably would rather them not, trying to potentially even rework how our multifamily districts work and trying to focus them. So what you have in your packets tonight, I'm not going to really focus on that. It's a lot. And admittedly, really just kind of wanted to show you, this is definitely a work in progress. We are nowhere close to this being final. So I do want to put that out there. We are looking to kind of have a more of a final package ready for you at the turn of the year, whenever the agenda allows. So I've been wrestling with a PowerPoint presentation that could potentially kind of walk us through some of the major questions that we've been wrestling with and kind of try to give you an idea of how staff, how we're looking at the comprehensive plan and where we see some of the shortcomings and conflicts. So my main goal for our staff today is to just really try to focus in on some of those main questions, get some feedback hopefully from y'all as to whether or not you feel we're headed in the right direction or if we need to change course a little bit on some of those major issues. And then also to get any additional feedback of certain things that you know of, that you want us to be sure that we're keeping in mind as we're finishing up on this redrafting effort. So with that being said. Did I just lose? I just lost the sharing.
I think they're working on it a little bit earlier, Jeff. So.
Yeah, Mayor and council members, we're using a hybrid method to display tonight to work on a technical issue, so we'll hopefully get that right back on for you.
Okay.
So we get to Adalib, what are we going to do for Thanksgiving?
We can add. Yes, now what I can do is I can give you a little bit of some of the major questions that we've identified. You know, one of them is to just kind of, we do have a building product in our comp plan that we currently don't have any way of permitting. So that's the live work unit. A live work unit is much like a townhouse. It could also be detached in just one unit by itself, but it has a non-residential space on the ground floor with either residential behind, above, or a combination of both. We just don't have any kind of regulations that get to that fine scale of mixing uses. We can do mix of use at a larger scale, but within one kind of residential unit, we just don't have the tools to do that. And live work units are, you know, a recommended building type in the plan that fits a lot of different potential characters. So that's one of the things that we wanted to talk to you about today, and here we go. So hold on to that thought. But here, here, just on the on the opening slide, you'll see I even kind of grade out in neighborhoods and mixed use areas because as we kind of got into it, for the most part, these residential building types do show up just in the neighborhoods and the mixed use area categories. But in a couple cases, the comp plan does also recommend possibly some residential types in retail areas as well as employment areas. So we'll probably be eliminating the last part of that from the title and just focus purely on how can we better implement residential building typology across our jurisdiction? So I wanted to provide you just with a refresher from the comp plan. Again, what is residential building typology? Well, we have this crosswalk in the plan that outlines these eleven different types of building products that will hopefully address Garner's residential needs. And I did just put in a quote there, you know, that in this section, it does talk about exactly that town officials should reference this information when it makes amendments to the local Unified Development Ordinance. So again, that is exactly, you know, the process that we're going through now. So here you can see on this, on this crosswalk, I did kind of highlight some of those major questions. So you'll see way over here in the right hand column, there's those live work units. Live work units are recommended in retail, employment, and mixed use areas as a potential building type. And as noted, we just don't have any mechanism right now for actually building those. Another question is this whole large lot versus small lot, single family detached. And this really speaks directly to the issue that we're wrestling with with the R eight district. And even to certain degree, are the R four district. In the comp plan, large lot and small lot is separated by a quarter acre. If you're bigger than a quarter acre, it wants to be a large lot. If you're less than a quarter acre, it wants you to be a small lot. Our zoning districts don't exactly fit neatly into those two categories. We have districts that kind of want to span those two categories. So potentially looking at some adjustments there, need some direction about which way we want to head, particularly with the R four and the R eight district especially. Another issue, and that actually combines two questions and, or I'm sorry, just one. The next one combines kind of two questions. We have, again, when it comes to duplex, triplex, and quadplexes. So these are housing units that have multiple units on one piece of property. So they differ from a town home in that regard in that they're all on the same piece of property in the same structure. Townhomes are actually on their own individual lots. So you see here that we do have duplexes. We actually encourage two types or we promote two types in the plan. We have side by side units, which is typically what we see in Garner today where we do have duplexes. But then the plan starts to look at trying to encourage units to be stacked on top of each other. So there's duplex stacked, triplex stacked, and quadplex stacked. Just as important to notice is what you don't see. You don't see triplex and quadplex side by side. So that was a conscious, again, decision and point of direction within the plan itself. Historically, to date, the U D O is treating and breaking things between two units and three and four units. We are also being pushed by the legislature in different ways to treat one unit, two unit, three unit, and four unit buildings the same in some ways. Doesn't have to be across the board, but there is there is that underlying push. So one of the ideas that we've wrestled with as staff is where do we, do we treat them all as one, so duplex, triplex, quadplex, kind of all together as a single use? Or is there, are there valid reasons why we want to treat them still differently? So are there some cases where duplexes in certain zoning districts would be okay, but triplexes and quadplexes not? That's a very basic kind of why we might choose to break it down that way.
Just a question. So what, when you're looking at development around us in the region, are you seeing this type of product out there in other communities? And are, how are they handling this triplex, duplex, quadplex construction?
I think a lot of them are trying to encourage it. I don't know that anybody's yet really found the magic pill to let it grow. I don't know of anybody who's really doing much of this today. I would guess it's probably still happening more on a property by property basis, which is historically kind of how duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes have happened. A lot of times they end up being older homes that were larger, that didn't fit really that use anymore, and so people started carving them up. The challenge is, is how do you keep that from happening? Because there's reasons why you don't want that to happen, but how do you, how do you try to create the environment, I think, to build these up brand new from scratch so that it's an actual intended option? So I don't know, Mr. Dellenger, that I have anybody that's really doing it well at this point.
Is it, is part of it a financing issue and there's just not readily available financing for this kind of?
I kind of suspect so, unless you were somebody that was really doing like a whole neighborhood. And I just don't know that that's, anybody's really caught on to that idea yet. So yeah, I do think if it is just one or two here and there, financing probably is the hurdle.
So you're saying like the stacked units we're looking at, there's three, you consider putting now let in one category to some extent is what you're thinking here rather than just keep having more and more and more and more?
Well, I think there's, I think there's reasons why in some cases a duplex might be okay for one zoning district and maybe not okay for another, or more particularly why a quadplex might not be suitable for a certain zoning district because it is four units. And at some point you start running into our density caps. For instance, let's just say in R four, if we had it grouped as one, you could still do two duplexes on an R four piece of property, assuming you had an acre. But if you had that acre, you could only do one quadplex. So in some respects, that might not be a bad thing. It's leaving you more open space around it. But keep in mind, that's just a very simple one acre kind of answer. Once you start getting up to, you know, ten acres, well, you could do twenty duplexes or you could do ten quadplexes. But it just kind of, it kind of depends. So we see, we see some advantages and disadvantages to either way, but we'll delve into that in a little more detail. But looking at our zoning district purpose statements, this is kind of where staff feels based on the projects that we've been looking at, where we think Garner and you all are wanting to head. And so we kind of want to confirm some of these things, you know, are we way off base? Are we missing a little bit? Or are we pretty much hitting the nail on the head? So we feel like our R two and our R four districts are really the districts that we want to see, single family detached. And we really should be trying to preserve those primarily for single family detached. Those are kind of our historic neighborhoods, they're the wider lots. This is really where we want to try to focus our detached, traditional, single family housing, maybe side by side duplexes. We do have a lot of areas in our ETJ that are zoned R two that do have duplexes currently, particularly out in the woodland area, Grovemont and Woodland. They're front loaded, you know, the driveways come off the street. They're not tucked behind off an alley or anything like that. So again, just very, very traditional. The R eight, where we, we think that needs to head based on what we've seen thus far, is that really needs to be the district that focuses exclusively on small lot house scale products. So that includes our small lot, single family, our small format multifamily, anything that's two to four units, regardless of whether it's a town home product or it's a triplex, quadplex kind of product, as well as live work units. The one thing that those all have in common potentially is that they want to be rear or alley loaded. The lots are a little bit narrower. They don't support having both a driveway from the street and still have enough room for on-street parking. When the lots get, you know, to a certain point in how narrow they are, you start having so many driveways, there's really not space in between them to still accommodate any on-street parking. So at some point, when the lots do get to a certain point of narrowness, you do want them to be going back to an alley and having the cars in the rear. So that's the one thing that they have in common is, is really that rear and alley-loaded access. And what we're seeing right now is developers who want to use the R eight, get the narrower lot, have the smaller side setbacks, but still serve the property from a front driveway directly off the street. MFA, we lost again, but I can keep going with this. MFA, and maybe I'll choose MFB first because we did talk a little bit about MFB in the last package, but we pulled it out. MFB again is really where we see the U D O being able to fill the gap in the comprehensive plan where we want to have mid-rise development. So we had low rise, if you remember the intensity map, we had four A, four B, and four C. Four A was, you know, multifamily, five stories or less. Mid-rise was six to 10 stories, and then we had a high rise, which was more than 10 stories. We have zoning districts that fit low rise and high rise, but we don't really have anything that fits mid-rise, that's six to 10 stories. So when you think of some of the areas around North Hills, other, plenty of other places around the Raleigh area that are in that six to 10 story range, most of them, quite a few of them to be mixed use. They have that other non-resident source floor, residential then above it. So MFB is where we kind of see we have the opportunity to fill that gap. And that's where we really kind of think want to start to push people again. We're trying to keep in mind the idea of the mix. That being said, we still do have to probably have a district for the other stuff, but I think it's if we try to steer that other stuff that maybe is a little less productive on the break, break even side, it's a district that we can use more judiciously. So that would be the MFA district. So the MFA district would then kind of be any type of multifamily apart from the, the mixed use type stuff. So that's kind of how we see the districts breaking down. Would be curious if you all had any comments on those or if you want to just kind of ruminate on it and continue to think about it, but that's kind of where we're heading with trying to purpose each of our zoning districts to better fit the comp plan.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a question or an observation. So I think the observation on the R eight is there is, if you look at the comp plan and the wording in the U D O, there's a high end aspirational intent for the district to either itself include some commercial or non-residential elements or at least be adjacent to them.
Yeah.
And it's almost in exchange for that, you get the smaller lot sizes and you get the smaller setbacks. What we're seeing is what's come in is you're getting the smaller setbacks and the smaller lot size, but you're not meeting those other expectations.
Right.
And I'm, I mean, personally, if you're beating sort of those residential, those non-residential commercial elements, then you can slide into the smaller lot size, but you shouldn't get the reward of the smaller lot size and the smaller setbacks if you're not meeting the aspiration for the zoning district.
Gotcha.
And I don't know if there's a sliding scale in there somewhere where it's like, oh, you, you have, you know, twenty percent is commercial or you're adjacent, so you can get the, but that, that's kind of where I'm seeing that, that loophole part of it is.
Yep.
Those setbacks and, and getting that density, but not being proximate to the other type of zoning that was expected to be near it.
Right. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, that's certainly something we can, we can take a look at just from the purely the use side. We did have that in mind with thinking about introducing the live work unit to try to bring, hopefully try to bring some encouragement for that non-residential component, but yeah, even outside of that adjacency and walk, take a look at that.
Jeff?
Yeah, no, that, that's an excellent observation. These are the things we'll need to continue to look at to, to phrase, to rephrase what I think I heard you say, if we're going to put these houses small enough and close enough together that it's appropriate for being in a city or a town, let's make sure they are within walking distance and of the town-like atmosphere and not just miles of things spread out in what we used to call suburbs. If it's going to look like a town, get town benefits. Yeah, so that's an important concept as we go through. Did you have an observation?
Yes, I did. Yes, we're, this, what we're dealing with every town, dealing with and talking about the new types of housing and what have you because the price of land and, and more and more people are not looking at the amenities. They work or couples and they just want to come home and have maybe the local clubhouse pool. But I'm seeing a lot of these houses sit on Maywood Avenue, them behind Arps, all around Shaw University where the old houses were, they're building these narrow ones, like three stories, they're bright colors, and you can see them over there off of South Saunders Street and where I, the Harley Davidson dealership is all in there. It's, I'm starting to see that trend and there, there'd be like three stories. It's not the best for walking people, but it's older guys. But then on the top, I've seen some of the deck up there, those on Maywood Avenue. So they're really unique, but they're designed to put, like you said, they're up on smaller lots, but they, apparently there's a big demand for those and it's not a, a, what I call a cheap home because if you start pricing, they're quite expensive. But it looks like we're seeing a lot more trends in building type, housing type. And that's one thing we'll, always going to happen is going to be change and the, the, you know, there's still a certain amount for the big homes, but those big lots are getting fewer and fewer. So, so it sounds like we're seeing a trend here of things we've got to really look at all across that board there as you were talking about there that, that about time we think we got the same figured out and now we've got something new we've got to deal with. So I guess that sounds like it's where we're going here.
Well, the, the product that you speak of would be a perfect example of one type of product that I think would fit in that the R eight district would really target and promote. Yeah. You don't, you don't really want that product going in a R four or more suburban, but you want it to be at the R eight. Maybe a neighborhood mixed use in certain, you know, cases, but yeah.
Good, good observations. Other questions, comments, observations?
Yeah, just one, another quick question about, so the conditional, we have a conditional zoning, but what I'm seeing is sort of the use chart, so correct me if I'm not understanding this properly, that, so you have the MFA is there and it's really sort of a weird in between. And if I were looking, I'd probably look at the R eight based on what's there. We used to have the plan residential developments and PUDs and whatever, where you could actually have that full extent of housing types, like single family all the way to something, you know, apartments even. Is, is that something we can, that can still be done? Or is, you know, a large, large project like, because I see that's where the tipping point might be from a MFA. Or is, you know, a large, large project like, because I see that's where the tipping point might be from a MFA. So I can't do single family, but I want to have a single family product. A little further out from the core part of what I'm doing. Just having the, it's not sure if that's something that people can do right now. Or if it, is it, is it?
That, that is hard. Yes, um, so yeah, I mean, MFA, that could be a district that we would want to look at. That would, I think, be the district to try to do that. It is right now, it, as we're envisioning it, it would cover the whole spectrum of multifamily. The one thing it wouldn't is that single family detached.
And I'm not recommending we do that. I'm just, I'm just saying if you are a developer trying to get a mix of product types, but do you want to do some single family? There's, there's a lot of overlap and then there's not some overlap.
Right.
On some of the available um, uses on multifamily size. And I guess. We just end up breaking those into two different.
We do.
Districts.
Yeah.
Okay, zoning requests, okay.
But you know, one, one of the options that we could consider is if we did decide that, you know, hey, maybe we do want to include it in the MFA. Or maybe we want to make sure that we're giving it. A little extra scrutiny. That might be a candidate where if somebody does want to mix that far, that we do require that. SUP. So the single family detached could be an automatic special use. Um, so there's, there's different ways you can. We could approach that if that is something that y'all are interested. Otherwise, we can just continue to just have separate districts. That's always an option.
Okay, thank you. I think our assignment tonight was receive the first round of information on this, be thinking about it. And decide, uh, will we need further discussion before uh, making a decision? And the answer clearly is yes. This is very, very important stuff. Uh, it, it's a lot of details, but it shapes the, the nature of our communities, the nature of our development. And even the shape of our budget as we go forward. A lot of implications here. Uh, so again. Thanks for the information. It looks like maybe in January it'll be back on the agenda. In between now and then, with your help and your staff's help, we can learn more about these details. Whether it's one-on-one, two-on-one, little special sessions, whatever we need to do to educate ourselves in this new world. Uh, when I was a kid, there were houses and apartments and maybe the rich people has some duplexes here or there. But it's, we usually got a whole new variety of products. It's a whole new world. We have to learn. We have to learn how to recognize it, how to use the right structures, the right kind of development at the right place. It, as you say, it's an ongoing process. Thank you very much for the work you've done so far. And unless there's further comments or questions, uh, we'll move along to the next item.
Well, I think, I think Jeff, this is just the first portion of his presentation tonight.
Roll on, roll on.
If I could just make a, a, a brief update on the technology. We're unfortunately experiencing what we think is a failure of one of the pieces of equipment. That we rely on for the broadcast. And so we're not certain if this is going to go out again, and we can't. Find a pattern to what is causing it to do it. So we've provided you the slides in front of you. So if we do have a disruption again, we'll just ask Mr. Trezenberg if he could refer to the slide number. If he moves ahead to something and wants us to advance in our slides.
Sure.
To the extent that that is effective, we will attempt that if it goes out again. So sorry for the interruption.
No, no problem. I got slightly off our feed there, but this is this important stuff. We can learn some more tonight. Please proceed, Mr. Trezenberg.
I will, I will try to, I will try not to bore you to tears, but um. And I won't spend a lot of time on these graphics, but um, since John has been able to hand those out to you. Um, you, you know, we can certainly take them, but I did just kind of want to. Give you a overview of what we were trying to show in these graphics. So what we did is we took each building type. So just starting on the far left, we have accessory dwelling units. Um, I'm sure you probably remember we enable or we allow accessory dwelling units. We haven't had a lot of takers yet. Um, but what you see, so you see over here, you have the building type. And you have which character areas that building type is encouraged. Um, and then over here, you have the zoning district table. That matches the same character areas. So in which character areas, for, for example, in rural living. What kind of zoning district fits rural living? And so you see, you know, residential agricultural, RA, you don't see R two. Um, so over here, we just drew a line to help make the connection that, hey, we do have a zoning district, RA. That supports accessory dwelling units in a rural setting. So wherever you see a blue solid line, that means that we've got. Our zoning ordinance allows that to happen. Where you see um, an orange line, uh, in this case. We don't have a district that allows it to happen. Um, so for mixed use areas, if we're going to, if we want to uh, allow accessory dwelling units in mixed use character areas. We need a zoning district. That would allow it. The closest thing that we potentially would have would be the R eight district. So there's a question, do we want to then? Enable and set standards for accessory dwelling units in the R eight district because currently we don't have any. So again, if you go back and you think about the types of housing that we would be encouraging there. They would tend to be more like town homes, duplexes. Maybe that's just an anomaly that we. Don't want to encourage. Um, in which case then we wouldn't really have to do anything. But again, it's a question. So we'll, staff will continue to think through all the different possibilities. And if there is an option that makes sense, uh, and come back with a recommendation for you. But if you do have any thoughts on that, we certainly welcome those.
There'd be a lot size big enough to put an accessory dwelling unit on an R eight, the way, the size, when they go to the minimum, there's just not.
Yeah, there's not a lot of room. And not that um, accessory dwelling units don't have to be detached. They can be built in. So maybe that's an option to consider that way too. Um, but at this, like I say, at this level, we're just kind of, we were trying to identify where the gaps were and where we were okay. And so what might we have to address? I did touch on this while the technology was out. We do have that large lot versus small lot. We talked about a quarter acre kind of being the dividing line. Um, but it does create some issues with the R four district in particular, because R four. Wants to be a large lot. But it technically qualifies as a small lot. So when we review it for consistency, we're always giving negative scores. Um. So I guess that's one thing that. We haven't perceived that as a major issue um, from the council. Um, that R four, despite it being really a small lot, we're okay with treating it as a large lot. From staff's perspective, we think that building type still works on a typical R four lot. Um, so we're not opposed to it. Um, so if we were just drawing on. Experience to date, we'd probably say, well, let's just go ahead and. Kind of in our minds, be thinking of R four as large lot, even though the comp plan might say technically otherwise. I think where we see the line more at would be the R, between R four and R eight. So don't know if anybody has any strong feelings on that, but that would be kind of another question, point of clarity. So again, you see again, these kind of same examples here. We did the same thing for uh, single family detached on large lots. We have districts. Um, but you'll see there I put R four as a possibility. R four technically is not a large lot. Um, but we might want to start just considering it that way. And vice versa, we might want to take it out of really being considered a small lot. And have the R eight again, like we talked before, really being the focus of our small lot detached. We've already touched on live work units. Um. Again, these generally should be rear or alley loaded, so they fit very well in areas that already might have town homes. Um, or quadplexes, things like that. When talking about what types of uses though are appropriate, the one thing that staff noticed, we were looking through the use list. What kind of things would be appropriate? For a live work unit that was also part of a larger neighborhood of town homes and single family. Personal and professional services kind of seem to be. One that didn't raise too many red flags. You know, somebody might have their insurance. Office downstairs or um, a small area for, you know, one person to. Do hairdressing for a couple of customers at a time, uh, things like that. Again, keeping in mind, they do have a storefront. It's just that they also live there either behind it or above it. And they may have neighbors next to them who are just neighbors. They don't have a business. So you don't want it to be too intense, but something more than what we would traditionally call a home occupation. Um, retail and sales was one that we were like, oh, it would be. Live work units really want to lend themselves to some type of retail sales, but currently our UDO. Treats retail sales as one category fits all types of retail and all type of sales. So there may be certain goods that just really aren't as appropriate in a neighborhood setting, you know, do we want to be selling? Uh, you know, tobacco vape products, things like that. Um, you know, it right there in the neighborhood. Um, so we started looking around and a, a lot of communities are. Seem to have something along the lines of what we've put in the initial draft for artisan shops. Things that people do that may start out as a hobby. Um, but then they also then want to set up a small storefront in a small space, a little more formally to do their hobby. But focusing on the handcrafted items, things that would be. Low volume and not be, you know, attracting, you know, 20 shoppers at a time. Um, but something that, again, you could have, have that opportunity. A florist might be another example of. You know, a small scale florist, somebody who just doing that. Um, very low, low scale, maybe two employees, two to three employees at most. Um, again, parking's in the rear. You have the on-street parking up front for your customers. Again, you don't want it to be a huge customer base because parking still will be limited. And then we did put in a very pretty wide suggestion of which districts to potentially allow them. Um, I think they could be mixed in with a lot of different things from neighborhoods all the way to retail centers. Um, things that are oriented a little more exclusively towards retail. Uh, so just curious what, again, aside from. Aside from there maybe not being a lot of people out there doing these right now, there are some. Um, I think there's some. Actually in a, there's a development down in Fuquay, um, and the name's escaping me right now. That has um, some live work units.
I have a question about, so if you have a town home. Community of a certain number, you have parking and overflow parking. The problem is when you have these small narrow lots. There's a 15-foot difference between R four and R eight on the front, you know, they're the same for the rear load. But those narrow lots drastically reduce the amount of on-street parking.
Yes.
So that's again, I, the, the narrow lot thing is really kind of problematic when you combine it also with. Smaller side setbacks because you're losing 10 or 20 feet per lot. That adds up on this, a full street length. You're, you're losing maybe. 30% of the potential parking because the lots are so narrow. Um, so that's just, when I start thinking about having any kind of business or something, uh, parking becomes an issue. You know. It, because they can't park on the backside because of the rear load, there's not going to be enough room to. Have business parking because you have the driveways are so close together on your alley load, you're not really good to do that. So. I kind of want to see it, what it looks like somewhere else. If I do it in Fuquay, it'd be interesting to see what their lot dimensions are and. And how it works.
Yeah, I, I want to say that the one in Fuquay Verena, if I'm not mixing it up with something else. I believe there's even like a shared kind of parking court.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That, that's private and it's part of their kind of HLA. Um, but it is kind of a court that's either off to the side or maybe even some of the buildings. Surround it and front on it. Um, so yeah, that's, that, that is a very, yeah, on-street parking, even if it is uninterrupted by driveways. Still may not be enough.
That one on Jug Parkway, I think it's called the Bengal or something on the left side in that area there. It's kind of like what you're talking about, I think, say, a shared parking area. To where the businesses are, but they're still residential.
Yep. Yeah, so I do think parking standards are definitely something we need to, to hone in on. And we already talked about the stacked units. Um, again, just a reminder that. 160D does not allow us to mandate design elements for anything that's one to four units. Um, but the stacking versus side-by-side, it does allow us to um. Make rules regarding height, bulk, orientation and things like that. Um, so we do think that we could craft. Regulations that would. For lack of a better word, require um, units to be stacked as opposed to be side-by-side. And then again, we did talk about the, you know, some of the, if we group duplex, triplex and quadplex together. Um, there's a number, there's a number of districts and so R two and R four. Um, currently allow duplexes, but not triplex and quadplex. And MX on the other hand allows three and four units, but not duplexes. So again, combining them into one may not be the answer. On the one hand, just for simplicity, I'd just like to, you know. Just like we do two to four town homes in a row, we consider house scale. I'd almost like to just combine duplex. To quadplex, but there, there are some differences. And so maybe it is still appropriate to have. A line of differentiation between duplex and then triplex and quadplex. If anybody has strong feelings on that, feel free to let us know. Um, otherwise we'll continue to wrestle with that as a group. And uh, come back to you with our recommendation, maybe even an option of going either way. Yeah, so here, here I did, I did put this slide together. I forgot about that. Um, this gets to that finer scale of differentiation. If we were going to do that finer scale. How we kind of see that playing out is shown down below. Um, where we might just consider the side-by-side duplex. Appropriate for R two, since they do have the wider lots, you can do the side-by-side more comfortably. Um, maybe the R four in certain cases, that still might be comfortable. But then kind of as you move up the zoning districts in terms of density. The types of plexes also increase in density. That's just one idea we had as to how, how that might play out to continue to differentiate between them. And then these last two are still fairly straightforward. Again, we have districts to implement them for the house scaled town homes. As well as the town homes that are four units or more. In fact, some of them do require a special use permit. So that's the dark blue lines as opposed to the light blue lines. And then also for multifamily, we have plenty of districts uh, that implement that. And even you'll see again, some of these residential options. Show up as being desired for both retail and employment. Um, and we do have a district, the CMX district that does allow that to happen. Uh, but again, as a special use permit.
So going back to the plexes, I mean, um, I think if you leave it. Flexible for the property owner, developer to do what they want. If they want to put a four-plex there. You know, they're going to eat through their density very quickly, but they're then creating more opens. If, there's more flexibility to leave them flexibility.
Yep.
I don't know, I, in, until somebody comes and asks. You know, it's kind of hard to know what the market really. You know, it's kind of hard to know what the market really wants to do.
Yeah, no, I do, I do think that that is a potentially. Argument for leaving them combined, just go ahead and leave the flexibility if there's no. No heartburn about any specific scenario. Um, and then just see what happens, sometimes giving a little more flexibility on the front end may encourage people to think. More flexibly as well. And so, you know, at the end of, at the end of it all, a lot of this was focused on. Uh, chapter two in the comprehensive plan, which is the framework. Again, Matt talked to us about making sure we keep the framework right, that we defend the framework, we really promote the framework. Um, but we don't forget about the character chapter, chapter three. Um, so just kind of wanted to remind us that again, we did want to come back and see, okay, now that we've got some. Are working on some proposals. Are we helping to fulfill the goals and objectives related to character? Are we providing for greater home choices at different price points? Are we supporting initiatives and incentives uh to introduce those accessory dwelling units? Um, are we reflecting the community's values and preferences towards that housing mix? And are we supporting the initiatives or incentives to really try to give some focus to that small format multifamily? I do think um, there's some aspects of the package that we're envisioning that speak to all of that. Um, maybe there's things that we we could be doing more or could be doing better. Um, so certainly would invite any feedback on that if you feel that we're not addressing something enough. I that you'd really like to see this amendment package promote and quote unquote, take care of. Um, so again, just a reminder, looking for that direction on the four major questions, I think we've gotten a little bit of that here tonight. Definitely encourage you to reach out, I'm happy to have one-on-ones with any of you. Uh, to discuss this in more depth and detail. If we want to dig into the into the draft, a red line uh that we have, our working draft is what I'll call it. I'm happy to do that as well. Um, so yeah, I just want to leave you with this question of, is there anything else that staff should focus on from your perspective as part of this package?
Good, good question, excellent presentation and I I'll ask again, we've we've had some good comments and observations from. Uh, council members here, we do have a lot of homework to do, we will need special. Handholding and one-on-one, two-by-twos to absorb this, to make good decisions. Because this is the framework going forward for for a number of years. And we'll be looking at these definitions, these types, these zoning regulations. Uh, it's not just, everyone's a unique decision, but we need the right framework to go by, so. Very impressed with what you put together here, it excellent input, Mr. Dellinger, apparently this is his hobby studying this stuff. And thank goodness for your attention to detail. If if there's no other questions or comments.
Well, I I hope this was maybe a better way of trying to introduce one of these packages to you. Um, and not just throw at you a red line. Um, just to kind of give you some ideas of where our thought processes are at the point. Um, so again, I hope this was helpful. Um, we're going to be working on this diligently over the next couple of months and definitely are interested in any feedback. Or any additional communications you'd like to have with us.
Yes, indeed, excellent, thank you very much, this will help be be very helpful and we have our homework cut out for. And that takes us to number two on discussion and reports, which has to do with stormwater. And we'll be starting out with Leah Harrison, our engineering director, talking about stormwater overview. And for any of you who haven't been exposed to this, I I've learned a lot over the last couple of years as president of our little homeowners association. Where phase one, that I was not in, they built about forty houses, this is about twenty years ago. On the same terrain as ours, same topography, they put in no stormwater control measures. Twenty years ago, that was not a thing. Our homes were built within the last twenty years, we've got two expensive to build and expensive to maintain stormwater control measures. They're very important, this this water cannot just rush down to Lake Benson and start filling it up with mud. I understand, uh, but by the same token, I think we we have come to understand that proper. Conscientious management uh of the stormwater runoff is a critical part of any building and developing that we do. And we're starting to be viewing this as another type of infrastructure. Just like we have to have the right number of roads and greenways, we have to have the right kind of sewer and water. We have to have the right kind of facilities for for handling the stormwater runoff as well. And used to, uh, you have one septic tank for a lot, but that's not what we do anymore, you have a central sewer system. We don't have a well per lot, we have a water system. And we don't need to have one pond per lot, one stormwater retention uh per lot. We need to come together as as a development, as a community, as as a region or a district. In some way to manage this stuff responsibly. And that's what Ms. Harrison is here to tell us about, give us a little overview. We we won't need an action on this part, but then we'll get around to with some more details on the nitrogen control. So it's all yours, Ms. Harrison.
Okay, thank you and good evening. Um, so we're gonna hope for the best with the presentation showing up, but you do have a presentation that Mr. Hodges has handed out as well in case we. Lose connection. Um, as was mentioned, this is just intended to be an overview, no action needed from you, um. We recognize that stormwater regulations are um complicated, there's a lot of different programs that we enforce. There's a lot of different regulations, state, federal, local. Um, and those are all things that you all are hearing about, especially as development comes before you. And so we just wanted to take a step back and walk you through some of those programs. And give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you might have and take a look at um some of the things that we might be looking forward to in the future. So the town has a variety of programs and regulations related to stormwater management. Overall, the goals are to preserve water quality, protect from flooding and to conserve sensitive environmental areas. There are several federal and state programs that the authority to um. Enforce those programs has been delegated to the town, so we inherit a lot of the rules from groups like. Um, the Department of Environmental Quality of the state and even the E P A at the federal level. And then as a reminder, we do have an engineering design manual that has details about all these programs in it. Um, as well as standards for construction of stormwater infrastructure. So most of what we're going to go over tonight will focus on um the development aspect of it and the impact on development. But cover a little bit of of everything in our stormwater program. So the first program that we have is um the Noose Rules for Nitrogen Control. So the um, the Noose River was identified to have a nutrient concern um in nineteen ninety-seven. And as a result, statewide, the Noose Nutrient Strategy was adopted. Um, the nutrient of concern in the Noose River is nitrogen, which leads to excessive algae growth and other water quality issues. Um, you can see in the figure, the entire Noose River Basin, Wake County being. In this area up here and then, of course, it flows all the way out to the ocean. Um, in response to the state rules, the town's stormwater program for nitrogen control was first implemented in two thousand and one. And was updated in twenty twenty-three to reflect the updated state rules. And so the elements of this program include review and approval of new development. Um, illicit and illegal discharges, post-construction site runoff controls and public education. Those are the four elements of the town's program or major elements, there are others. So what this program means for development um is a few things, so. The Noose Rules track based upon what is called Built Upon Area. You're probably more used to hearing impervious surface, it's it's really. A similar concept, it's it's built area, impervious area. Um, that is the threshold that is used for the nitrogen program. And it's measured cumulati- cumulatively from the beginning of the rules, so we have new rules. That went into effect in twenty twenty-three, um, anything that is built from then. Even if it's ten percent at a time, five percent at a time, once the overall hits twenty-four. Then it is required to have a stormwater control measure to to treat the runoff from that site. Um, the way this works is the state has reviewed different types of stormwater control measures and each one has a nutrient reduction rate. So they will say for each type of device, this reduces the amount of nitrogen in the water by twenty percent, ten percent. Um, and those percentages are applied to the calculations that are done to show the nutrient reduction. Um, and this is all done through a state-approved tool that we are required to have developers use. So projects can reduce nitrogen export through a combination of onsite stormwater control measures. You can have regional offsite stormwater control measures as long as it's still capturing um that area from the development. And there's also the opportunity to purchase nitrogen offset credits. Which goes to different mitigation banks, it's basically a way for a developer to purchase those credits and the mitigation banks. Dedicate land elsewhere in the watershed to be preserved for nitrogen reduction. Uh, another part of this rule um is the Noose Riparian Buffer Rules. You probably have heard a lot about buffers on some of those jurisdictional streams. And that comes out of protecting the the Noose River Basin as well, those um buffers limit how close. Any development can get to the actual stream channel of a lot of streams within the Noose River Basin. I have a spot for questions at the very end, but if you have questions in the meantime, feel free to stop me because. You might not want to remember them until the very end, so just hop in. Um, the second program that we have is another delegated program and this is sort of a combination. So there's the Water Supply Watershed Protection Program, which is a statewide program that protects any watershed. That is used for the drinking water supply for people. As part of this program, we also have the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. The Swift Creek Land Management Plan has been in effect since nineteen ninety-three. Um, this was basically an agreement. Municipalities within the Swift Creek Watershed got together in response to development of the Water Supply Watershed Protection Program. And had a conversation about how do we want to implement these rules? What's the best way for us to be in compliance with the Water Supply Watershed Rules? But still allow our towns to develop in the way that we would like them to develop. Um, so at kind of a simple explanation of it, whereas the Water Supply Watershed. Rules apply a standard impervious limit to any piece of property, any parcel. The Swift Creek Land Management Plan. Did some trade-offs so that certain areas were allowed to develop at a denser um or higher impervious percentage. And then other areas would be kept even lower impervious percentage, so the overall balances out, but you do have those areas that. Can be developed more densely for the purposes of development and economic opportunities. There's a lot more to that plan, but in a nutshell. Um, the total, the goal of this is to reduce the total suspended solids that are entering Lake Benson. Lake Benson is a drinking water supply lake for the city of Raleigh, which, as you know, serves much of this area with their drinking water. Um, including all of Garner. And total suspended solids or T S S is the contaminant of concern in the drinking water supply. This figure is from the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, just showing the overall area that is. Um, subject to that plan or involved in that plan. Um, you can see, of course, toward the bottom of the watershed here is the Lake Benson area. Um, so these rules only apply to that portion of Garner that is in that Lake Benson watershed. So not every parcel in town will have to comply with this set of rules, only. If um they are within the Swift Creek Watershed that flows to Lake Benson. So what does this program mean for development? Um, I have a typo in that first bullet, I noticed before I got up, but it's supposed to say in the Lake Benson watershed. Um, impervious surface is limited to twelve percent without an S C M. Um, with a, with an S C M, a primary treatment device, that limit is increased to either thirty percent or seventy percent. And which one of those it is is based on how the land use has been designated in the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. Um, so every piece of property is designated as urban, rural or suburban. And that determines what that high-density threshold is for that piece of property. Within the critical area, um, which on this figure is that red hatched area that is the closest to the lakes. And the and the Swift Creek. Um, impervious limit is six percent without an S C M and can go up to thirty-five percent with a primary treatment device. So a little bit stricter regulations because of its proximity to the lake and the stream. This is also an area that the town of Garner calls the Lake Benson Conservation Overlay, so this is an area that we've designated in our U D O as well. Uh, with the same regulations. And then, um, just as a note, a primary treatment device is one of those stormwater control measures that's approved by the state. But it is specifically approved to treat T S S, so not every type of stormwater control measure. Will provide a benefit and reduction of T S S, so it has to be one of those primary devices. The next program that we have is stormwater detention, uh, this is one that is not required by any state or federal program. This is something that the town has chosen to do and has required since the nineteen eighties, which was. Very proactive um and forward-thinking of the town at the time. There are a lot of municipalities that still do not require any type of stormwater detention, um, especially when you get into more rural areas. So we have this written into the U D O as well as within the Stormwater Program for Nitrogen Control. And it is intended to manage the quantity of runoff from developed sites. So the other programs that we've talked about until now are really about preserving the water quality. This one is just about the the sheer volume of water leaving any particular site. Um, so just a little bit of background so that you understand what the regulation is. Um, runoff from any site or within any watershed um during a storm event happens to what we call according to a hydrograph. Um, so there's a very simple version of a hydrograph on your screen. Um, it's just a graph of time versus discharge or flow rate. So when a storm begins, um, you have some water running off, but not a whole lot. And then at some point, that's going to ramp up fairly quickly, it reaches a peak, a peak flow rate, the highest flow that will happen. During that storm event and then slowly tapers off as as the rain stops and the flow returns to normal. Um, as properties develop with a higher impervious surface, the shape of these hydrographs change. Um, the more impervious surface you have, the more quickly you get up to that peak and the higher the peak tends to be. Because the water runs off a lot more quickly than when you have grass and plants and trees to trap it. So the very top of this hydrograph in any situation represents the peak flow during the rain event, so that's the highest amount of water that's leaving that site at any given time. Um, so our regulations are based on peak flow attenuation, which is really the height of that peak. So we are saying that the the height of that peak leaving your site after you develop it cannot be any higher than it was before you developed it. Um, and the other important thing to note is within a stream and within a whole watershed, you have a combination. Of a lot of different hydrographs from different sites that all are combined together. Um, so each site has its own peak flow at its own particular time, but the overall watershed will have a peak flow as well, so it's a combination. Of those graphs that really determines what's going to be happening at any point in a stream. I know that's a lot and I don't intend to give you an entire hydrology lesson today, but um, so that you understand the the peak flow concept. So what this means for development, uh, for any new or redevelopment, stormwater control measures are required. To provide peak flow attenuation for the one, ten and twenty-five year storm events. So those storm events are defined um by the state, that is a standard definition of a of a storm. As far as how much water is coming down and how quickly it's coming down. Um, so those are the standards used, uh, the year designations are ba- based on. What originally was considered to be the frequency of those storm events, um, that has changed a little bit because our um. Weather patterns have changed, but we still, they're still designated as these storm events, so that's the requirement. We also have within our regulations. We also have within our regulations, um the option to require detention of the one hundred year storm event, which would be a larger storm event at the discretion of the town engineer. And this is when deemed necessary due to downstream flooding concerns. So if we have development sites where we know we have flooding issues downstream, then we will require the one, one hundred year storm to be detained as well. The pre-developed condition is the condition at the adoption of the detention rule, which was in the nineteen eighties. So anything before that is basically grandfathered in. What was existing onsite at, at that date is the pre-developed condition, and then anything that you change afterward is going to be the post-developed condition. There are three exceptions that we have to the detention rules. So in these cases, peak flow attenuation or detention is not required. If the increase in peak flow between pre and post-development condition does not exceed ten percent, then we do not require S C Ms to provide detention. Um, sometimes an SCM might still be required onsite because of the other rules, but it wouldn't be required for detention specifically. Um, if the overall impervious surface is less than fifteen percent onsite and the rest of the site, the pervious areas are used to convey and control the stormwater runoff um to the maximum extent practical. And then the final one is if it can be demonstrated that detention will increase local flooding downstream. Um, or that the increase in total peak flow will increase less than two percent. So this requires a flood study to be done by the developer to prove that this is the case. And it's a little bit of a confusing concept to think that detention could increase the local flooding downstream. And that really goes back to what we talked about with several of these hydrographs happening within a watershed at the same time. So the way that you get the highest peak flow at any point is to have the peak flow of several sites all happening at the same time. Um, so typically the goal is at the bottom of a watershed, you want that water to get out quickly. You just want it to move. You'd prefer that that peak is close to the beginning of the storm. Because you don't want it to wait until something upstream is also coming down, and then you get a higher overall flow and more chance for flooding. So those are the areas that we typically see get that third exemption, which is very rare. Uh, we have very few sites that even apply for that. Um, but it's um places where they are very close to the bottom of a watershed. And it is beneficial downstream to just let that water be discharged directly so that it doesn't coincide with the, the peaks upstream. All right, next we have the flood damage prevention and floodplain management ordinance. So this is another one that is, uh, we're required to have to comply with federal and state rules. Um, Garner's floodplain ordinance was first adopted following the development of the first, um, what you've probably heard called firm maps. Flood insurance rate maps. That was in nineteen sixty-eight. And that's the first time that there were any regulations related to floodplains. The town's ordinance is required to be at a minimum consistent with state and federal regulations. Our ordinance is actually more restrictive than the minimum requirements in a, in a couple of different ways, and we'll talk about that. Um, so just a little visual visualization of the floodplain. Um, you have, you can see in the left figure, you, there's the actual stream channel, which we would call the floodway. And then you have the larger area that is the floodplain. So under normal conditions, everyday conditions, no rain event, you have water in the floodway. Um, the floodplain is when you do have a rain event, how far that water is going to spread out on either side of the, the floodway. So according to federal and state regulations, what's considered the jurisdictional floodplain is the one hundred year floodplain. So this is during what is called a one hundred year storm event. This is the extent of uh where the water is going to go outside of that stream channel. Um, so the town of Garner regulates the floodway, the floodplain, and in addition, we do have a conservation buffer area that is outside that one hundred year floodplain that we regulate as well. So what this means for development, uh for the town of Garner, development and land disturbing activities are prohibited in the hundred year floodplain. As well as in the conservation buffer outside of it, which is fifty to a hundred feet depending on proximity to Lake Benson. Um, to be able to do development or any land disturbance in this area, um, a variance from the Board of Adjustment is required. If that variance is granted, which is typically in cases where not granting that variance would make a property unusable. Um, then there are further regulations within the floodplain ordinance about how that construction or development has to be done. Um, including regulations related to the finished floor elevation and being out of the flood elevation um and specific construction standards for the structure. All right, our next program, which it has less to do with development, but I wanted to mention it because it is a large part of the town's overall stormwater program. Is um the permit that we have through the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Um, the purpose of this program is to regulate stormwater discharges to address water pollution um from stormwater. So anytime there's water being discharged, stormwater into a, what's called the waters of the US. Um, the N P D E S program is regulating that to try to preserve the water quality in the waters. The permit that the town has is for municipal separate stormwater system, which we call an M S four, which is a lot less of a mouthful. Um, but that's what that stands for. Um, the town does also have an additional permit through the N P D E S program for the public works facility, and that is a facility-specific permit because of the type of activities that they do there. Uh, but we do lump both of those into our pollution prevention program so that all of the compliance is kept in one place. Our M S four program was implemented in two thousand and five. So what is an M S four? An M S four is stormwater conveyance that is owned by a public entity, state municipality or otherwise. It's designed to collect or convey stormwater. Um, and it's not a combined sewer, so this is not applicable to combined sewer and stormwater, just separate systems like we have here. Um, this program has six minimum measures, so this is all part of our permit. Uh, we have public education and outreach. Um, we have public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff controls, post-construction site runoff controls, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations. Um, that's a lot of information, so I didn't go into a lot of detail here. There's some detail in your memo about a few of those, um, just some highlights, and then of course, if you have any questions, feel free to let us know. So as a, as a summary, um, we talked about a couple of the areas like um the floodplain ordinance, we have, we require above and beyond what federal and state requirements are. And have done that since our first floodplain ordinance after those requirements were implemented nationwide in the late sixties. Um, as well as having a stormwater detention ordinance and have, we've had that since the nineteen eighties. So we have a history of being proactive in stormwater management. Um, we will continue to seek innovative ways to enhance these regulations. There are, there is some state legislation that controls how much more we can require than what is required by state and federal law. Um, but there are still things to look at within those confines. Um, there's also a lot of research that is occurring at regional, state, and national levels, and that's an important piece of this equation. Um, because our climate today is a little different than it was when a lot of these regulations were first created. So they're taking a look at reevaluating what, what is a one hundred year storm? What does that look like? Do we need to modify what those storm events are based on the very large scale events that we have more frequently these days? There are also a lot of emerging technologies coming out, so um we have things like green stormwater infrastructure and low impact development that you probably hear about. There's a lot more accessibility to those happening, and so those are great tools that we can add to our toolbox, especially as at the state level, when they get on board with incorporating those into the regulations. Um, once those things are available for credit for the different programs, then it will be a lot more likely for us to be able to have development use them. And with that, I will gladly open it up to any questions that you might have.
Wow, a lot of information about stormwater control. There, there's more to it than E C I. That being said, let's see if we have questions or comments from the council members here.
I have a question around the amount of discretion we have around the form of water retention, whether it be above ground or below ground. Where's that at the property owner's discretion? What, what is sort of the, our latitude there?
Sure. Right now it is. Um, so we, you know, there are standards about how they would have to show us that whatever device they're using is providing the appropriate amount of detention. They do that through their calculations. And then for water quality, you know, devices are approved for specific water quality benefits um at the state level. Uh, beyond that, we don't have anything in our regulations that dictates what type of device would be used. Um, so for example, you know, underground detention versus an above-ground pond. We wouldn't, we don't have any standard right now that would allow us to require one over the other. Uh, we would allow either.
Is, is that generally driven in the region by land and development costs versus, I, I, I say that because you can go a lot of places. I mean, V A has an underground system. A lot of developments in Raleigh have underground systems, yet they come to Garner and they want to dig a hole in the ground.
Yes, it, it is, so um underground systems are typically more expensive, and there, they require more maintenance, so they're more expensive in the short term and the long term. Um, so typically they're used when the trade-off for the amount of land that you get back is, makes sense um for a developer and an owner, which in places like Raleigh that are tighter, more highly developed, is more common. Same thing with the V A side. The V A side is a lot on a small site, so it was worth it to them to go underground to gain that space back. So I think as we develop more, you'll likely see more of that because people are trying to do more with less property.
Have other questions?
Okay, well, now I believe we have another session on stormwater.
I just queued you up for it, so um, let me change over here. This one will be more brief. But here, um, so you have the same document within your um agenda packet. This is a um ordinance amendment. Text amendment um for stormwater, and so this is really for, uh, we have the nitrogen program, the stormwater um nitrogen program that we just discussed. That has a lot of our requirements within it, uh, within that document. So that document is basically referenced in our U D O. Um, and you can see in the section eleven point two, point one, how that's referenced. So all new development shall meet the requirements of the Town of Garner Stormwater Program for Nitrogen Control. The major requirements that must be met by new development as contained in the stormwater program are as follows. So what we did is reference the entire program because it's a large document. And then pull out some highlights of the program, the major requirements, and printed them directly in the U D O. Um, we have since discovered that there are a few other things that we would like to have directly mentioned in the U D O. And the purpose is because it will make our enforcement of those items um simpler when, when we have to enforce them. Um, so these particular items are, um, at project closeout or certificate of occupancy. We need um as-built for all of the stormwater control measures that are on the site. Those have to be submitted for review and approval. Uh, we have to accept those structures. And the property owner shall be responsible to maintain and inspect S C Ms annually. The second one is regarding the operations and maintenance agreements. So um for every stormwater control measure that is constructed, we require that the owner complete and sign an operations and maintenance document along with a memorandum of agreement. The town signs that as well, and that is recorded at the Wake County Register of Deeds. The purpose being that that follows that property in perpetuity. Um, that the owner of that property is always obligated to properly maintain that stormwater control measure. Um, because all of the regulations we have to have them built don't do any good if they're not maintained to keep functioning in the future. The third one is that annually, um, any property owners of stormwater control measures have to submit an annual inspection, inspection report. And this is an inspection that says this device is being maintained properly and it is working properly. Or if it's not, these are the maintenance activities that need to be completed. Those have to be done by a qualified professional. There are certifications related to that inspection um that people can, can receive. And then they are submitted to the engineering department and our stormwater staff to review and approve. And then the fourth one is at the time of development, we also require that a public access and maintenance easement shall be provided and recorded on a plat, providing access from a public right-of-way to the stormwater control measure for the purposes of future maintenance and inspection. Um, so those are the four items that we are um requesting be printed directly in the U D O. The language that you see is taken right out of the nitrogen program. And these are all things that we are already doing, so there's nothing new to be done. It's just placing them directly in that ordinance so that we can use that and reference it when it's time to enforce um, those items if they're not being done. And um on this one, um, we're just discussing today. If you, if you have any feedback or any questions, we'll answer those. And then we're looking to put this um in a public hearing likely in January.
Uh, yes, I, I think our directive tonight is to see if it's reasonable to put this item on, on for a public hearing at our meeting of January twenty-first. So that gives us a little time to look at it, and leaves our development partners uh time to uh look at it, think about it, ask questions. So we, we've got a lot of information here in front of us. And I think one of the keys you've hit on here, this is not new, it's not different from what we're doing. It's just getting it into the right place that will facilitate our enforcement, our education, our publication about the rules. Would, would you like to elaborate again on that part of it, or? Just, just tell us again, this is what we're already doing, and we're going to
It is.
Tonight say, yes, I think it's okay to put this on the agenda in January.
Yes, sir.
I, i- i- given, given that explanation, any other details that we need tonight? Okay, well, well, thank you for the excellent job you presented this. It represents a lot of work here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have another stormwater questions about the other stuff, just two quick ones. One, sort of the current stormwater infrastructure in, in the town.
Yes.
That we have to maintain. And I know there's an assessment going on, and it's, I guess it's in phases. What's the sort of status of, of that?
Sure. Um, yeah, so we are currently doing a stormwater um inventory and assessment of all the, really the smaller infrastructure. We did an assessment in twenty seventeen of those larger pipes. Um, we don't have a lot of larger pipes, so the smaller, the smaller infrastructure is a lot more of it. Um, so we've completed what we considered to be phase one, and that was the inventory part. So um our consultants help us take all of the as-bills that we had, and then also doing field survey to make sure that we have all of our infrastructure mapped in G I S. And then the portion that we are doing now is more of the condition assessment. Um, so we've divided that piece into really two sub-phases because we were able to get a grant for a portion of it. But that grant only applied to a specific portion of the town. Um, so we have that piece as well on its way, and then the other portion of the town that is covered by town funding is getting ready to start. Um, so we're looking forward to having some of that information, um, probably middle, mid twenty twenty-five. Um, and then we will be able to use that to inform any projects that we, we need to do for stormwater moving forward.
My other question or comment was, you know, if, if there are other um, forward-thinking recommendations on green stormwater, alternate stormwater um, to inform us of those, and if they can be plugged into the U D O somewhere, we've got, you know, just
Yeah.
It'd be helpful because it's, it's a lot to understand. Um, and like you said, the climate's changed, we're getting the same amount of rainfall, it's just coming in a different pattern.
Right.
Um, and so just kind of giving us alternatives and, and other ways of thinking about um, improving our sort of stormwater situation going forward would be great.
Yeah, I think that a couple of things, as we're doing the assessment, that's something that we've talked to them about is um, the consultant that is working with us on that about is as we identify. the consultant that is working with us on that about is, as we identify problem areas, some are just going to be as simple as this pipe is cracked and needs to be fixed. But there are some areas that have limited infrastructure, and we're looking for options. And that's a great place to start looking at things like green stormwater infrastructure because the town can be an example for implementing some of those types of projects. And then there are, typically the bigger cities like City of Raleigh, Town of Cary, they're a little further ahead in having development implement those types of measures. And so there's a lot of information sharing that is going on, which is helpful. And we hope to be able to follow in some of their steps and how they're able to do that. What would be really helpful is if, so for example, a lot of the green stormwater infrastructure practices, they haven't been rated by the state to be given like a nitrogen reduction loading. So when a developer looks at it, if they're doing it, they're doing it as an extra because it's not helping them meet that requirement. So if we can get some of that information updated, and that was a device that would count toward their regulatory requirement, that would go a long way in being able to incentivize people to use those.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you again for the great job you're doing and keeping up with this stuff. This is critical. This is life in the modern world. We want to be responsible citizens of the planet by looking after the footprint that we make. We want to be responsible partners to our neighbors and to our builders, and give them good guidance, help them be successful in being good citizens as well. It takes you, you and your team's constant education, constant work to keep up. Not to mention with the changing environment and things that Mr. Dallinger referred to. It becomes a moving target. So we greatly appreciate what you do. There's a lot to it. We're here to support that. I think tonight, we don't need a vote. We just need kind of an indication from council that we feel good about moving forward with this to be on the agenda in late January. Maybe it takes a nod or thumbs up. We're moving in that direction. That seems to be unanimous. Support of moving along. Keep doing what you're doing, keeping us on the right path.
And I would like to thank as well Jaclyn Standard, our stormwater administrator. I didn't want to make her be here tonight, but she offered. But she has been here for really close to 18 years now. And I think we are probably about the only place left that has a single stormwater staff member. And thank goodness it's her because she keeps all of us together. So yeah, definitely appreciative of her and her ability to keep up with all of this.
Excellent. It takes the team.
Yep, for sure.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
And that takes us to Section E on the agenda, which is manager reports. Ms. Miller?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Two items to report out this evening. First is your pending agenda for December. In your packet is the pending agenda items that we have scheduled going into our December meetings. First, the meeting December 3rd. We have our audit presentation, our FY '24 audit presentation scheduled for our first meeting in December. We have several consent items that will come back before you for approval. I just want to point out two. One is the supplemental laugh agreement for the White Oak Roundabout contract. And then the Jürgen Park Phase One Guarantee Maximum Price Contract to get under contract and start construction work for Jürgen Park. So that's very exciting. We also have our continued public hearing on the Jürgen Park rezoning. If you recall, we continue that to, from our November 19th meeting. Under old-new business, we had tentatively thought that the pool drive fuel sales issue and approval would come back to council. The owners of that property have asked that that be continued until our meeting in January, the 21st of January. So it'll be on the agenda, but the recommendation will be to continue it to the January 21st meeting. And then Attorney Jones is going to talk about her vision for our town code revision project, including how to approach that and timelines associated with that. So we're going to cover all those things in our first meeting in December. Looking ahead to our second meeting on December 17th, and we have a presentation, we have a retirement. Senior Officer Rodney McGee with the Police Department will be before you with his retirement. We've got a few items on consent. The Wake County Hazardous Mitigation Plan will come back for final approval from council. We also have Jürgen Park, a Duke Energy easement, as well as Police Department disposable property. That's in regards to Officer McGee's retirement. We've got one public hearing scheduled, exchange at 401 Commercial. Under old-new business, we have a field renaming recommendation coming from our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And then Mr. Hodges and I are hoping to have at least a first draft of a legislative agenda for the council to review and discuss as we're thinking about the new year and the long session that will be starting. And then under reports, we're just going to have two reports. We have our monthly talk of the town. Also, under attorney reports, we've tentatively scheduled one on the Pearl Parker Acquisition, Avisboro and Garner Road. These are the sidewalk projects that are there. It's marked tentative. We may end up pushing that to a January meeting as well, just depending on the timing. As council recalls, we do not have a work session in December because that kind of falls right in the middle of the holiday season. And then council was gracious enough a few years ago to cancel the first meeting in January to give staff some time to enjoy the holidays. So we have one meeting in January, regular meeting, the 21st. And then we have our work session, which will be a week later, the 28th. So those are all the updates I have on the pending agenda. Are there any questions on the pending agenda?
Well, thank you very much for proactively looking ahead, getting this organized. It does take weeks in advance, and even then it still changes. There's additions, modifications. Thank you for being on top of it.
Well, it is definitely a team effort. I want to commend Attorney Jones, Assistant Manager, Mr. Hodges, and our dynamic duo in our clerk's office, Estella Gibson, Rebecca Murray. They do a great job keeping us focused and on track with these items. So. In addition to the pending agenda this evening, we also have updates on our development activity map. And I'm going to ask Mr. Trezenberg if he'll come forward and provide an update to council on the map. So Jeff?
Thank you. Yes, so in working with staff and particularly Alex Bone, our GIS analyst, we continue to make little modifications to this product. Some are a little more apparent at times than others. But did want to make you aware of one of the pieces of data that is now available that hadn't been before. And thanks to the inspections department and their monthly reporting of data out. When you click on a particular neighborhood now, a project that's under development, such as George's Landing, and you scroll down, you will now see an update on the number of certificates of occupancy that have been issued. So that can, when you look at that combined with the total number of housing units that are approved, that can give you an idea of just how far along that project is at this particular point in time. There's also, there will also be a, when Alex makes a change in the development project status, the date of the last update will also begin to appear. So you'll be able to see when that happens. So just wanted to make you aware of that additional data that's being incorporated, again, being updated on a monthly basis. And then since your last update, which I think Mr. Hodges gave you last month, we have had a few additional projects that have shown up on the map. The first one is over here off of Greenfield, South Greenfield Parkway, Project Cougar. So definitely give that a look. Then, and that is a, an industrial headquarters kind of proposal. Then down here off of Cleveland School Road at the county line, there is an interest in a mixed-use development along Cleveland School. There previously been a proposal under the county to do something on this property. But now it is, the developers are interested in coming back and trying to make something hopefully happen there. And then finally, we have, sorry, went to the wrong place. The other project that has been added is the Wilmington Road Mixed Use Land Assemblage, which is the Lipinski's Extended Family that is there behind the Commerce Park where UPS is. But it backs up as well to the Village at Garner Station and to Jürgen Park. So that would potentially fill in an area there along Jones Sausage Road and Wilmington Road. So there's, are the new projects that are appearing on the map in the last month. And again, just a reminder that the items that are showing up in purple, when you click on something and you see a graphic of a proposal, a sketch, just please keep in mind that at this point, those sketches have not had any staff input. Those, we are, you know, you're hearing about these projects earlier now. So that is the sketch that they are coming to us with for their very first discussion, but it does not incorporate any comments. So chances are, what they will come in with next will probably look different than what's showing up there. But again, just wanted to remind folks that if you are looking at a project that is in purple, those sketches that you see are just that, and they have not had any staff input at this time. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Let me again applaud the efforts of you and your team at getting this information out here where it's available to the public, to the citizens. If you want to know what's going on over here, why are they cutting these trees down? What was that zoning sign about? Go here. Go to the town website. Go to development activity map. You can see everything at a glance, what's under construction, what's application in process, what's under review. You can click in. You can see today's plan on that stuff or yesterday's plan. Fascinating stuff. It would be very entertaining. I don't know if it'd have any scholastic value, but to see the very first development map that you had a few years ago, then have a little time lapse as it just grows and fills up with all these multicolors. This has been a lot of growth. This has been a lot of great record-keeping and information passed along. It's a great portal. We should all be looking at it regularly. Thank you for your efforts. Entertain us next time with a time lapse of where it was.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you very much.
So thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. And just a reminder, due to the holidays this week, the Thanksgiving holidays, the town hall will be closed November 28th and 29th. That will include the rec center and our Parks and Rec activities as well. And just hope everyone has a safe and joyful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And I believe that takes us to Section F, Attorney Reports.
I do not have a report tonight.
But you've been working hard. I've watched you for the past couple of weeks.
Always.
Yeah, I think so. And council reports. We'll start down at this end. Councilman Matthews, any council member reports?
Just a comment if I could. I thought the festivities earlier this week, the park out there, and Rebecca and the gang putting it all together, we had a good turnout there. It was a lot of family fellowship of sorts with everybody. And it was a good turnout. And thank you for what you did. The weather was very cooperative.
That was the hot dogs and smores event.
That was it.
And they had the good judgment and the logical ability to read that the original date was not good weather-wise. And they postponed it to the perfect weather day. It was just lovely. Great event, well-attended. Greatly appreciated. Thanks for all your help. Behringer?
Couple of things. Yes, I was able to go to that event too. But if I remember correctly, it was, Ms. Murray told me that by the time I got there, you guys had eaten all the chocolate.
So what are you going to do about it?
I'm working on that. I also have a question. I talked with the manager earlier today about, there were some workmen, I don't know that they were surveyors, but they were marking, putting stakes in the ground with colored flags on them all up and down the street that I live on. And neighbors were calling me and saying, what is going on? What is going on? My husband went out to talk to the workers in our yard, and they said, we don't know why we're doing this. We're just doing what we were told. Is there any method or any way of making sure that when this kind of activity goes on, that the property owners can know what's happening? It's kind of strange to look out in your front yard and see two men you don't recognize digging holes. And one of the men said, oh, it might be a beautification project. They might be putting sidewalks down your street, or maybe it's cable. We just don't know. So is there, can we find a way to get better information?
Ms. Behringer, we'll talk to our engineering team and see if there's an opportunity to make sure people have a notification ahead of time before any work is done, whether it's utility work or other work. So we'll work on that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Good observation. Mr. Dallinger?
Nothing for me. Yes, I just have a few things. On last week, the Human Resource Committee conducted interviews to look for filling the various openings on various boards and committees. And we have two individuals to present to the council tonight for approval. And they are Mr. Ben Mills to fill the ETJ position for the planning commission. If he's approved tonight, he will go before Wake County for approval because it is within the ETJ. And we have Ms. Gina Lynn to fill the position on the senior advisory committee. So we present those to the council tonight for motion to vote and see how it goes. And those two positions will be filled.
Excellent. And I believe one of your other committee members is sitting next to you who was involved in this.
Yes, he was. Yes, he surely was, along with Ms. Rebecca as well and Ms. Stella. They were all engaged, very engaged in pulling everything together. A great group, great group.
Great. And it's a great committee that keeps up with all these positions and keeps them filled with good, excellent, well-screened candidates. Mr. Vance, would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes. It is. And I'll second with the comment in that as we do our interviews for these committees, we're both continually blown away with the level of interest and enthusiasm and skill and talent of these volunteers. And it makes selecting very difficult because we have so many good candidates. So it's very time-consuming but gratifying to see that people want to be that engaged. So.
Well, excellent. That's very encouraging. Here we have eager, knowledgeable people that are good candidates. Thank you for continuing. So we have a motion and a second to approve those two individuals for the positions identified there. Is there any further discussion or question on that topic? If there's not, I'll ask for just a verbal vote here. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, they're unanimously approved. Thanks for the good work on the HR committee.
And then one other thing, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say, last week, we also visited with Vandura Springs Elementary School with the kids. Several of us were out there along with the staff, the police and the fire and others without an opportunity to sit down with the classes and read a book with them. We just had a good time with them. It was a great time of socializing and everything out there. And I think the kids enjoyed it as well. I know I did.
Well, the pictures were fantastic, and it was all a testimony to the flexibility of their school administration and our board members. The kids were planning to walk over here somehow for this field trip. But the little weathers, it might have been the same weather that messed up the smores party. But our team here, I think led by Assistant Manager Hodges, said, well, why don't we go over there? And sure enough, you did, and great fun was had class by class. It's always interesting to see the kids who are interested in town government.
Yes, sir. I realize I'm getting older. I can't get down to the floor like I used to.
You can have to start doing more exercise, working out, man. Come on.
You need to get down to the heart, but I was getting back up.
If you can't pick up a fourth grade, what good are you?
Not much good.
Well, thanks for the report and the participation in all of that stuff. I see we have no closed session on the agenda tonight.
No, I will be asking for a brief closed session on a settlement of a claim next week.
Good. We can't wait. You say settlement. That's always good. Okay, thank you. If there's no other business, no other questions to be handled here, I'll ask if there's a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Movement. Is there a second?
Second.
There's three seconds. All in favor of accepting that motion and adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? If you say nay, you can stay just as long as you like, but we're moving on now. Thank you very much. Adjourned. Adjourned.